All. On Monday, May 2nd, 2022, we have one item on the agenda. Sunset area transformation update. We have Mark Santos Johnson and Hannah Bond Miller. And Mark, I believe I hear that this is the last time you're going to present to council before you retire. So, thank you for all your years of service and we'll turn it over to you and Hannah.
Thank you very much. Hannah will be running our presentation tonight. So, thank you Hannah. Good evening, council members. As noted, my name is Mark Santos Johnson. I'm the Community Development and Housing Manager in the Department of Equity Housing and Human Services. It is my honor and pleasure tonight to give you an update on the Sunset Area Transformation. My presentation will include some context and an overview of the city's early planning work in the Sunset area, information about the Sunset Area Community Revitalization, the Sunset Area Transformation Plan and our collective implementation efforts, ending with future community needs and opportunities. I have a lot of slides to cover and information to share. So, if you have any questions, please note them and there will be opportunities at the end of my presentation to address them. As several of you know firsthand from your earlier time on the council, we applied for a HUD Choice Neighborhoods Implementation or CNI Grant in 2015 and 2016 for the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. If we had received a CNI Grant from our 2016 application, the five-year period for implementing the grant would have run from early 2017 through early 2022. Although we didn't receive the grant, we decided with our partners to move forward to secure other resources to implement as much of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan as possible. Tonight, we take the opportunity to look back on our shared progress to date with our many partners on the Sunset Area Community Revitalization and Transformation Efforts. The Sunset Area is a 269-acre neighborhood in the Renton Highlands. Currently, there are about 3,500 residents and approximately 1,550 housing units in the neighborhood. This slide provides an overview of the city's now more than 15-year effort related to the Sunset area. My following comments will provide more information on each of these items. For those who may not be familiar with the Sunset area before, here are some photos of the Renton Housing Authority's former 100-unit Sunset Terrace Public Housing Project, a property that is at the core of our revitalization and transformation efforts. Here are some photos of some of the hundreds of World War II-era homes in the neighborhood that the Renton Housing Authority and the federal government built as temporary housing in 1941 to provide homes for workers at Boeing and Packard. Most of them still exist today. Here are some photos of the former Greater Highlands, Greater Renton Highland Shopping Center, the site for the new Solera mixed-use development now under construction. At the left center of this photo is the small former Renton City Pocket Park, which was replaced by the new three-acre Sunset Neighborhood Park. RHA used the park site and two adjacent World War II-era duplex sites to build the 50-unit Sunset Court Affordable Housing Project that opened in 2018. The city started working on potential revitalization efforts for the Highlands community in 2000, more than 20 years ago. However, it wasn't until 2005 that the city started more intentional planning work for the area. The initial planning work included two Renton Highlands Task Force efforts. In 2006, the city convened a community task force to make recommendations on zoning changes to help stimulate redevelopment in the area. The goal was to help revitalize one of Renton's older commercial and residential areas into a community with more compact urban development, featuring a mix of residential and commercial uses and a range of housing types and pedestrian-scale amenities. In 2007, the city convened a second community task force to help identify and make recommendations on the next steps to implement the vision for the center village zone property in the Highlands. The group focused on desired neighborhood improvements and increased amenities for residents. The work of the two task forces led to the development of the Sunset Area Community Revitalization Project. As reflected in this slide, there were four primary parts to the revitalization work, beginning with a community investment strategy, followed by a planned action EIS, the creation of the Sunset Area Community Revitalization Program, and a community needs assessment. In 2009, the city collaborated with the Renton Housing Authority and the Renton School District to work with the community, property owners, developers, and stakeholders to create the Sunset Area Community Investment Strategy, which was adopted by the Renton City Council in November 2009. The Community Investment Strategy included nine priority recommendations. The number-one recommendation was to work with RHA to support the redevelopment of the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing Project in the center of the neighborhood. However, other recommendations included a new library, public plaza, community gardens, Sunset Boulevard improvements, and various park utility and infrastructure projects. RHA built the Sunset Terrace Project in 1960 as a low-density affordable housing project that over time had become obsolete and expensive to maintain. As part of the planned redevelopment of the property, RHA made a commitment to replace all 100 housing units by bedroom size with new housing. RHA relocated the residents in phases, providing each household with alternative housing and the opportunity to move back into the new replacement housing when completed. Here's a time-lapse aerial video that profiles the development of the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing. Thank you. To help facilitate the Sunset Area Community Revitalization envisioned by the two task forces and to support the planned investments included in the Community Investment Strategy, the city and RHA worked to complete a Sunset Area Planned Action EIS or Environmental Impact Statement in 2011. The EIS identified potential capacity in the neighborhood for an additional 2,300 new dwelling units and 1.25 million square feet of service or retail space over the next 20 years. Using the Community Investment Strategy and Planned Action EIS as a framework, the city created the Sunset Area Community Revitalization Program. The goal was to leverage public investments by the city, RHA, and the Renton School District to catalyze private property development and create opportunities for market rate and affordable housing plus retail investment in the neighborhood. Revitalization elements include mixed-use projects, Sunset Terrace off-site replacement housing, and various transportation, utility, and infrastructure projects. Here is the need statement and community vision for the Sunset Area Community Revitalization Program. Overall, the goal was to improve housing, social, educational, and health outcomes for neighborhood residents. This slide illustrates many of the capital investment projects included in what at the time was a 280-million public-private partnership. Projects are spread out throughout the whole neighborhood, but the majority of projects and investments are centered around the redevelopment of the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing. To be better able to respond to additional human services and housing needs in the Sunset area, the city completed the first community needs assessment for human services and housing in 2014. The assessment included a separate addendum for the Sunset area. In addition to providing invaluable information, the Sunset Area Community Needs Assessment was a requirement to be able to apply for HUD's Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant, which the city and our partners were starting to prepare for at that time. The Community Needs Assessment included 13 priority human services and housing needs, both for the Renton community and separately for the Sunset area. As noted on this slide, the priority needs addressed the primary areas of economic opportunity, basic needs, health and wellness, available quality housing, and neighborhood opportunity. In late 2014, the city, RHA, the Renton School District, Neighborhood House, and the King County Housing Authority started working together with other partners to create the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. Building on the work of the earlier task force, the Community Investment Strategy, the Planned Action EIS, and the Community Needs Assessment, the transformation work included both the creation of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan and the smittle of two HUD Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant applications. The Sunset Area Transformation Plan provided a guiding document for additional investment and collaboration in the Sunset community. The plan aims to increase the affordable and market-rate housing in the neighborhood, catalyze critical community investments and private investment, provide human services and education support, and increase opportunities for residents. Using the framework of HUD's Choice Neighborhoods Program, the Sunset Area Transformation Plan includes specific housing, neighborhood, and people strategies. The Sunset Area Transformation Plan was created and refined as part of two HUD Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant applications, the first in early 2015 and the second in 2016. If successful, a HUD CNI Grant could provide up to $30 million to help redevelop the former Sunset Public Housing Project, but former public housing project, implement various neighborhood improvements, and provide human service and education enhancements for residents. The original Sunset Area Transformation Plan included 30 partner organizations. The King County Housing Authority graciously acted as lead applicant for our grant applications. Unfortunately, RHA was not eligible to apply as a lead applicant since they had not received major HUD revitalization grants before. The principal partners were the city, RHA, Neighborhood House, and the Renton School District. As noted on this slide, there were nine anchor institutions, seven additional community partners, and nine additional leverage partners. For the housing strategy, RHA was the principal partner. The goal is to increase opportunities for investment in the housing market and prioritize solutions to address unmet housing needs. The strategy includes 172 units, including 133 new construction units and three projects, 15 renovation units, and 24 units outside of the city. For the neighborhood strategy, the city was the principal partner. Goal is to develop public amenities, improve housing conditions, and facilitate connections between residents. The strategy includes eight critical community improvements that address a variety of residential neighborhood and business district needs, plus public safety initiatives for the community. For the people strategy, Neighborhood House was the principal partner. The goal is to create connections to services to meet residents' health and developmental needs for both human services and education. The strategy targets five areas, which include health, kindergarten readiness, continuous academic success, college and career readiness, and promoting self-sufficiency. The Sunset Area Transformation Resource Council was established in early 2016 while working on our second CNI Grant application. The goal was to provide an ongoing council of residents, business owners, community representatives, government, and service organizations to promote and help with improvements to the Sunset area as part of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. The group has met continuously on a quarterly basis since early 2016. Unfortunately, we were not successful in securing a HUD CNI Grant in either 2015 or 2016. However, as I noted earlier, the city and our partners decided to move forward to secure other resources to implement as much of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan as possible. The implementation was very different since we didn't have up to $30 million over five years from a HUD CNI Grant, but together, we have made much progress over the past five and a half years. For the implementation work, I will cover three areas: the city's Americor Vista Project, the Sunset Area Transformation Plan Implementation, and the Community Investment Strategy Implementation. Although HUD did not provide us with the CNI Grant, in early 2017, the HUD Region 10 Office assigned Sarah Linsley as a community capacity liaison to assist us with efforts to implement the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. Sarah greatly helped us secure other partners and resources, including Americor Vista volunteers. Our work with the HUD Region 10 Office and Sarah also evolved into work with the Renton Innovations Zone Partnership and the Skyway Community to help create the pop-up Skyway Resource Center in 2020, which was designated as the first HUD envisioned center in Western Washington in late 2020. In 2018, we started the Renton Community Development and Education Americor Vista Project. The first year each of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan, four principal partners had a national service volunteer. This is a photo of the original four Americor Vista members and their supervisors. All of the volunteers did incredible work, and two of the volunteers are currently employed with the city and one is currently employed with the Renton School District. I think you'll recognize her current employee in the middle there. In 2019, the city's Americor Vista Project expanded to nine volunteers, adding two new partner organizations in Community Schools of Renton, Taquilla, and Central Rendu of St. Vincent de Paul, and expanding community development volunteer service to include downtown Renton and the Benson Hill community. This is a photo of some of the 2021 Americor Vista volunteers at the team's very successful Renton Children's Day last year. Last summer, Renton's Americor Vista Project was transferred from the Department of Community and Economic Development to the new Executive Services Department. The project is now more closely aligned with the city's neighborhood program. Here's a list of the Americor Vista volunteers and placements for Renton's program to date, with the current volunteers noted in bold with an asterisk. We are very thankful to each of them for their year or more of national volunteer service to the Renton community. As I mentioned earlier, we had 30 partners as part of the original Sunset Area Transformation Plan, including principal partners, anchor institutions, additional community partners, and additional leverage partners. However, we have greatly benefited from many additional community partners and additional leverage partners who have joined us over the past five and a half years. We are extremely grateful for all the partners and funders who have helped us implement the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. And now, I would like to give you a brief overview of some of the accomplishments related to each of the three key strategies included in the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. Although RHA did not have the benefit of nearly $19 million from a CNI Grant for the housing strategy, they worked creatively with J.H. Bronner and Company and other partners, funders, investors, and lenders to substantially improve and increase affordable housing in the community. RHA's work included both new construction projects and modernization of most of their housing portfolio. The two new construction projects were RHA's third and fourth replacement housing project to date for the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing Project. In 2018, RHA completed the 50-unit Sunset Court Affordable Rental Housing Project, developed in part of the city's small former Pocket Park I noted earlier. The project is a half-block away from the Sunset Neighborhood Park and a block away from the Renton Highlands Library. RHA completed two major modernization projects in 2019 and 20. The work included 643 units and nine projects, with five projects and 282 units in the Sunset area. Last fall, RHA completed the 60-unit Sunset Oaks Affordable Workforce Rental Housing Project, located adjacent to the Sunset Neighborhood Park on the north side. It is the first new residential project with eyes on the park. Although we did not have the benefit of $4 million from a CNI Grant for the neighborhood strategy, the city and our partners completed a number of critical community improvements included in the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. This slide provides an overview of the major park enhancements and art projects completed in the last five and a half years. The most significant park improvement was the completion of the three-acre Sunset Neighborhood Park early last year. The neighborhood has also benefited from several art projects, including the Sunset Boulevard Fence, the Sunset Neighborhood Park Art, and a number of utility box art wraps. Additional neighborhood improvements included Green Connections, Street and Utility Projects, the Sunset Neighborhood Center renovation, and the development of the Willa Chris Townhomes Affordable Homeownership Project. This slide includes photos of some of the Green Connections projects completed in the neighborhood. In October 2020, RHA completed the LEED-certified renovations to the former Renton Highlands Library and opened the new Sunset Neighborhood Center. Neighborhood House coordinated the successful capital campaign for the $3 million project. Last year, Homestead Community Land Trust completed the 12-unit Willa Chris Townhomes Project adjacent to RHA's Glenwood Townhomes on land donated by RHA. The project is the first net-zero energy affordable multifamily housing project in Western Washington, and the partnership between Homestead, RHA, the city, and JP Morgan Chase, the project's first funder, was selected last fall for Governor Smart Communities Award. Although we did not have the benefit of $4 million from a CNI Grant for the People's Strategy, our original and new partners combined to provide significant additional health and human services and educational enhancements to support the community. In addition to the Sunset Neighborhood Center and the Renton Innovations Zone Partnership, which I will address in a moment, Kindering started providing significant early intervention services at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church. In addition, Neighborhood House and Sound Generations provided services to RHA's elderly and disabled residents, and Catholic Community Services provided services to formerly homeless residents at Sunset Court. Food lifeline and sustainable rent and increased food assistance in the neighborhood in both the city and the Renton School District started before and/or after-school programs for students in the neighborhood. As I noted earlier, the Sunset Neighborhood Center opened in October 2020. The facility includes services provided by HealthPoint, Neighborhood House, Central Rendu of St. Vincent de Paul, Belly Cities, and RHA. This is the first neighborhood-based multi-service center in Renton. As part of our 2016 CNI Grant application, the Bomber Group provided a $5.5 million contingent grant commitment to create a Sunset Children's Zone based on the very successful Harlem Children's Zone. Since we did not receive the CNI Grant, we unfortunately also did not receive the original Bomber Group grant. However, by working closely with the Renton School District, Community Center for Education Results, and other partners, the Bomber Group agreed to fund a new Renton Innovations Zone Partnership established in 2017 to enhance learning opportunities for children at the Three Skyway West Hill Elementary School and the Highlands Elementary School in the Sunset area. Earlier, I shared the nine priority recommendations included in the Sunset Area Community Investment Strategy adopted in 2009. As reflected on this slide, seven of the nine strategies are completed or have had substantial work completed to date. The Sunset Terrace redevelopment now includes the new Renton Highlands Library and new Sunset Neighborhood Park, plus the regional stormwater facility and the new Sunset Lane. Adjacent to the Renton Highlands Library, ICAP Equity is building the mixed-use Sunset Terrace Project with 108 market-rate housing units and commercial space on the ground floor. Project is scheduled to be completed later this year. The family village development proposed for the North Highlands Super Block with a combination of Renton School District, RHA, and city property was substantially changed. Instead of the proposed family village development, the Renton School District built the new Metalcrest Early Learning Center and, in partnership with the city, the adjacent Metalcrest Accessible Playground on a majority of the property. RHA has since modernized the Hillcrest Terrace Senior Housing Project included as part of the Super Block, and the city is working with the Bezos Academy to use a majority of the North Highlands Neighborhood Center for a new free, all-day, full-year Montessori-inspired early learning center scheduled to start operation this fall. While we have accomplished much together with our partners in the Sunset area, particularly in the last 10 years, there are still additional community needs and more work to be done. To get a sense of some of the needs, it's helpful to look at some of the earlier as well as current Sunset area demographics. In 2014, 27% of the households in the Sunset area lived in poverty. 75% of the students in the neighborhood qualified for free or reduced lunch, and homeownership had dropped below 40% compared to 55% in the city as a whole. The Sunset area today continues to be one of the more diverse communities in Renton, and as noted on this slide, the total BIPOC community and, in particular, the Hispanic and Black population in the neighborhood are increasing. This slide compares the Sunset area with Renton as a whole. Most significantly, the Sunset area has more than double the Hispanic population and significantly less Asian population. The percentage of households with incomes under $50,000 have decreased significantly, while other income categories have increased. This is related to existing households making more money, but we also know that lower-income households have had to move out of the area when they can't afford the increased housing prices. Many of the new households moving in generally make more money. As reflected on this slide, the majority of renter households are cost-burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs, and the vast majority of households with incomes under $35,000 continue to be cost-burdened. As noted on this slide, poverty rates have decreased in the neighborhood. Again, part of the change is related to the displacement of lower-income households who cannot afford the increased housing prices. Here's a list of some future needs and potential opportunities for the Sunset area. For example, the city is working to complete an updated human services assessment and plan to help us better address current community needs. We plan to continue to work with RHA to redevelop the remainder of the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing Property and work with RHA and other developers to create more affordable rental and homeownership housing. And we need to continue to work with residents and businesses to promote community events and neighborhood activities. We have several significant current or proposed housing projects in the neighborhood. The largest project is the Solera redevelopment of the former Greater Renton Highland Shopping Center. The 590-unit project includes 277 affordable and 311 market-rate apartments, plus 96 market-rate townhomes. The project started its site work last year. It's now under construction, and the rental apartments are expected to be completed in the next few years. The Renton Housing Authority just recently completed their fundraising for the 76-unit Sunset Gardens Affordable Housing Project to redevelop the agency's existing headquarters site. Project is scheduled to start construction shortly and be completed in 2023. The new mixed-use building will have both RHA office space and service areas on the first floor with three floors of affordable housing above for veterans, seniors, and persons with disabilities. The project will be RHA's fifth and final replacement housing project for the former Sunset Terrace Public Housing Project. Finally, the Skyway Resource Center, which grew out of our efforts working with HUD in the Sunset area, is actively working to move from their pop-up program to a permanent physical space. Last year, US Bank donated their Skyway property to the King County Housing Authority to use for the Skyway Resource Center. The community secured about $2.5 million in funding from King County and the state of Washington to renovate the building and is currently working on design and service plans to be able to move forward with renovations for the space. The many projects in the Sunset area were made possible by the support of many funders. Over the past 10 years, the city, RHA, Renton School District, and our partners, with funds secured from King County, the state of Washington, the federal government, and the private sector, have invested more than $150 million in completed Sunset area projects. There is an additional $230 million of investments projected for current or planned projects to be completed by the city, RHA, and for-profit developers in the next several years in the Sunset area. This slide includes some of the many groundbreaking and ripping cuttings that have occurred with our partners in the Sunset area over the years. The Sunset area transformation has occurred thanks to the vision, hard work, dedication, and collaboration of dozens of partners and hundreds of individuals. At the city, every department and virtually every division has been a part of this collective effort. With the strong support of mayor and city council and led by CD, dozens of current and former city staff help make what you see in the Sunset area today possible. Thank you to the city's current and former elected officials, leadership and staff for your collective and collaborative efforts and support for more than 15 years in the Sunset area. I also want to acknowledge and thank all the partners, funders, community organizations, residents, businesses, and supporters who helped make the Sunset area transformation a reality. We have much to be thankful for from our work together. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mark Bauer.
Mark and Hannah. I just want to say, awesome work. King Parker would be so, so, so proud of you guys. So proud of the city. Thank you for everything.
James?
Well, that was an exemplary job of getting through 80 slides efficiently, so I will say that. Something that, you know, when I looked at this over the weekend, I can't, something's not jiving for me here. If you look on page, where it's on slide, let's see, 69 is the community demographics, and it breaks down households by median income, 2015, 2019, under $50,000, 50 to 100, 100 and over 200, the percentages. Then a couple of slides later, or maybe it's the next slide, where it has households with income under $35,000, 88% in 2015, 2019. I looked at this every which way but sideways. I must be missing something because that doesn't jive. I looked at this every which way but sideways, I must be missing something because that doesn't jive with. The previous slide, so can you, can you tell me kind of what I'm. What I'm missing there?
Just a second.
So it's, so it's slide seventy and sixty nine.
So slide sixty nine is talking about households by median income. The next slide is dealing with cost burden households. So if you recall from our housing opportunity. From that recent affordable housing update we gave you. Cost burden is defined as people who are paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent and utilities. And severely cost burden is looking at people who are paying more than fifty percent. And unfortunately, we have, we use the available demographics that are there. But sometimes they're not always comparing apples to apples, and so what we've provided is the available demographics for each of the type of. Information we're trying to profile there.
Okay, so basically saying. Those even though there are more on sixty nine more that are. Over fifty thousand, about sixty five percent you can buy this as far as median income. You're saying that of the people who are under thirty five, eighty eight percent. Are, is that kind of, because I was going kind of going about households with income under thirty five thousand. I, I, I got it.
We probably could have profiled this better, but we're trying to break down the cost burden. Within the subpopulation, and so I think that the important thing here to realize is that. While poverty has decreased in the neighborhood. There continues to be substantial cost burden for the lower income households who remain in the neighborhood.
Okay.
No other questions? All right, if there, do you have another question?
I let me, let me, I had something on the slide, it was back at slide twenty, so let me just kind of check to see if it's worth it. No, no, don't worry about it.
All right, if there are no other questions, thank you, Mark, thank you, Hannah, we are adjourned.
Thank you.